Good afternoon. I would like to call to order today's workshop for the ISD 191 Burnsville Egan Savage School Board. The date is Tuesday, March 31st, 2020, and the time is 5:30 PM. I'd like to welcome everybody who's joining us live and also just to recognize that, you know, these are, these are interesting, challenging times, and we're all in this together. So we're hoping that this first teleconference of a school board meeting goes without a hitch, but we also know that sometimes that just happens. So bear with us, please. I do want to make a note that we do have all seven board members plus Dr. Battle here. Director Courier is only on audio. She was unable to get video, and we will see if we can rectify that next time. Also with some flexibility, although we were scheduled to start discussing the introduction of an AA degree at the high school. Amina Oftedal is still trying to get into the meeting, but we will actually start with Lisa Ryder and our discussion around FY21 budget adjustments. The primary goal for today's conversation is hopefully to narrow, narrow ourselves down. First and foremost with staffing to honor and respect the work that must be done before the end of the school year. And if we're able to get consensus on other items, that's wonderful, too. With that, I will turn it over to Lisa Ryder to begin our conversation. Lisa?
Chair Alt.
Yes?
I have some introductory comments.
Sorry, go ahead, Dr. Battle.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair Alt and Directors of the Board. Before Executive Director Ryder begins her presentation tonight, I wanted to share once again about how we are approaching the budget. As I've shared previously, when it comes to this budget process, what's most important is that we are taking a strategic priorities-driven approach, and this approach is different from what you and this community may have experienced in the past, which involved across the board percentage cuts for all programs and departments. These initial thoughts about the budget were reflected in the presentations given to the board on March 12th and March 19th, and tonight we will share updated information based on board direction given to us on March 19th. This direction included providing information regarding athletic fees, continue to view adjustments through the interactive budget model, add additional color coding to distinguish budget reductions already completed by board action, continue to provide information regarding fund balance and budget scenarios for increasing class size by one, 1.5, and two students, and identify additional efficiencies. My team and I have reviewed our initial budget recommendations, and we are making additional adjustments tonight. We are adding a reduction of 1.0 in the district-wide administrators group. And there are a few items that we will not be recommending as part of our recommendation. At the last board meeting, we heard from a few board members discussing not to include orchestra, middle school music and orchestra. I support those discussions, but I'm not sure that we receive consensus. So there are three items that fall within decisions that may be best made based on student demand, student and family needs, interest from students, and strategic directions set by the board. For these reasons, I am not recommending restoring CIS classes at Burnsville High School or eliminating orchestra at either the middle or high school level. For CIS courses, the drop we saw in the number of students taking rigorous college-level classes is a cause for concern. It's unclear how much financial savings we saw because of the change, but it, it may not be aligned with our strategic direction of closing gaps and raising achievement for all students. I would also ask that we've removed the recommendation, some that was discussed, some that were discussed last year, eliminating ninth-grade athletics, patrol stipends, and increasing fees for activities and athletics based on additional information the team and I have learned. These changes, we think, would have a negative implication in terms of safety, access, and enrollment that make, that may make them untenable to our community. Although we had initially thought activity fees were low compared to our conference, a closer look showed that they are closer to the average overall, and we have one district that is skewing the results when you look at the comparison. The one or two districts do have much higher fees. We are continuing to recommend the board consider increasing walk distances with the understanding that implications for safety must be explored. Also for consideration again is the reduction of the media EA positions by 50% their, their hours, excuse me. And so we will strike through any items that are no longer for consideration, that we're not recommending and the board would not like to consider as we move through this budget process. Overall, these recommendations must reflect the fact that the board has set Vision 191 and will approve the budget. Schools and programs should make choices about expenditure and programming based on the board actions and the needs of students and family. Lastly, once again, I want to emphasize that the impact of these reductions will mean that we will lose talented staff, beloved colleagues, and the expertise and the investments we have made in each one of these staff members will be sorely missed. And so with that, I will turn it over to Lisa Ryder.
Thank you. I am going to share the screen that shows the presentation here so all can see. Is that the case? Okay, so the presentation that we have is very similar to what you seen last week on the 19th, excuse me. As we take a look at this. Hang on. So we just want to review again where things stand now and our interactive model and talk about next steps. So as we talked about the last meeting, when we discussed this, we are currently using 7,606 for our enrollment numbers. With that, that's a projected, initial projected deficit of $8.5 million. These are rounded figures. With the voter-approved levy, that's 1.6 million. That addresses that deficit. Closing of facilities, we anticipate to be around 2.6 mil. Right sizing based on enrollment is another 1.3 million dollars. And additional adjustments and efficiencies are 0.85 million, with the remaining deficit then of 2.15 million dollars. As we take a look at this interactive model, these numbers that you see here are our options. We know that if we were to utilize these figures, that there is a, a change in revenue, but there's also an additional cost for teachers. So we do have this built into the model so that people can choose different figures if we want to. Also on this slide is the updated adjustments for March 31st for today. As we take a look at this interactive model, I'm going to escape and move over to that directly. And now you should be seeing the Excel budget list of all of the adjustments. And as we talked about last time, numbers 1 through 15 are blue as they reflect the closing line items as well as the right sizing, and they all have in column E a yes, as indicated for inclusion in our adjustment total. And then you see, beginning with row 16, and this carries on down through 32, that we have activities and athletic items that are accounted for there in adjustments, and it totals around 130,000. Also, green, which indicates based on our key at the viri bottom, there is a key that shows the green is recommended by leadership. Blue indicates that which is decided by the board already or considered part of the base. And then we have some, I see the salmon color, that those three lines, 56, 57, 58, you can only choose one of the three, not any combination. So given that, all of the green then that you see that it comes below line for reference number 32, these are all items that were identified outside of activities and athletics, and we attempted to show the department description FTEs. A yes is indicated on everything highlighted green as it is recommended by leadership at this time, with a anticipated savings is, it's a savings if it's in brackets. If there's no brackets on it, that then indicates that it is an additional cost to the total budget. As we look down, the manner in which this is intended to work is if there is a yes, then it would be included in the total. So coming into this, everything below number 47 should be no's. And you will see then that the total amount is 4.78 million dollars, and that is the figure that is linked to the sheet ahead, and that shows the same 2.15 mil as our, our base starting point now, given the other adjustments that have already been made as part of our integrated action plan. I believe where we left off was with dialogue around these various items. The items that Dr. Battle mentioned are still listed here at this time. And I want to go back to the PowerPoint now and just run through a few of the other slides and make sure that we are clear on that, and then we can come back to this as we need to. As we go back to the PowerPoint and continue through this, our timeline is for additional work with principals and leaders here in April. Online input form for parents and community through April 5th, April 9th board workshop, and maybe that intention is that it be part of the board, I wasn't certain, but I, I have it here as a workshop. And then presentation with regard to that recommendation to the board, and in June is when the board actually takes action by approving our final budget. We're really focusing on your guidance at this point to make sure that as we move forward, you have a line item budget that comes to you in June that reflects the intention as to how it is that we bring forward a recommended budget to you that can meet the expectations that you may have. Where we have the online input link here, and the two questions that are being asked as part of our public survey. So I'll go back now to the interactive model and be prepared for whatever the next step might be, as you may request, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, Lisa. Thank you, Dr. Battle. I will, wanted to first call out one new addition to this document since our previous conversation, and that is line 47, a reduction of one district-wide administrator. That is new this time. It wasn't there last time, and I just wanted to make sure we were all aware of that. With that, I will open it up for questions, comments, board members. Leslie?
Yep, my, my question right now is wanting to understand a little bit more about the, you're not wanting to recommend restoring CIS at Burnsville High School. Just wanting to understand what the rationale was behind that.
Yes, Chair Alt Director Chester, the rationale is that a student demand may change from year to year. It is reflected in the student registrations, and irrespective of the courses offered, students need a full schedule. And so if, for example, we eliminated orchestra and then we had a demand, the kids would may be without a class or choose a class that's less desirable. I just believe those decisions should be, decisions should be vetted at the school level based on the student demand. So year to year, it could change, but I think if the schools get the allocated budget for their site, they are to allocate based on, make decisions based on that allocation.
But if you're saying that having the, having that as an option is based on enrollment interests, it's not currently in the catalogs, so how could they sign up for it and show that interest?
Right, so we'd have to take a look at that. That is a change, having a handbook. So I, I would ask Assistant Superintendent Brian Gersich, there are times when there may be a lack of a staff with a licensure, and we have to offer a course. So I'm not sure how we've handled that in the past, that there are no changes made to any of the classes. If a person takes another job and we no longer have that course and students still need that particular course, so.
Is Brian here to?
Yeah, sorry, I was just waiting to, to make sure that she was ready for me. Sorry about that. Yeah, I, I think a lot of that definitely holds for those decisions when it comes down to things like the orchestra that you gave as the example, where those, those courses are in the course guide, and if we don't have students who sign up for them, then that really helps determine what we should be running. So that is where those course alignments do come in. To, to Director Hume's point there, the students weren't given an opportunity to sign up for CIS this year because those had been removed from the catalog. So this is a bit of a unique kind of consideration here. And I think, Dr. Battle, if your point is to have BHS carve that out of their budgets or otherwise, it's, it's essentially putting it back to them to make that determination. But when I, when I look at this number in the, in the 66,000, I do think that that is a little bit unique from the orchestra because of the fact that, you know, as the CIS example, we do still have teachers that have probably flipped over to teaching the AP that were qualified to teach the CIS. So I think at the present time, we still do have that as an option. And I think that is still something that could be considered is, is my point.
And there are class size restrictions on the CIS classes that don't exist for the AP classes.
That is absolutely correct, and that was one of the, the pieces of rationale that good did go into that is, the average class sizes of BHS courses typically are closer to the 35-plus range, whereas CIS classes and, and, I mean, I may need to jump in here, I believe they are capped at 25, for sure under 30, but there, there is a significantly smaller class size limit because of the, the University of Minnesota parameters.
So this is, and CIS is actually an entirely unique situation, because all that, what we, the classes that we have now that are CIS are just CIS courses. What we cut last year was the duplicate AP CIS accreditation. And so all we'd be, so it's not a matter of, you know, these kids are taking a different, an additional class or a different class or anything like that. It is, it is that we no longer have, those students no longer have the ability to get the dual enrollment through the University of Minnesota. We're not adding any classes or anything that we're just, we've just simply removed their ability through the removal of the CIS classes to get that duplicate registration. And so yeah, so we're not adding, removing classes, anything like that with this. And so, because the only classes, the only CIS classes we did keep last year were the ones that were just CIS classes. They're not, we removed CIS from all the AP CIS classes.
Yep, that, right, that's accurate. So if you use calculus as the example, we still offer calculus. Previously, it was offered as AP slash CIS, so they were getting both of them in one, one portion. They could use the CIS portion or could also take the AP exam. And in that situation, what they did was, to your point, I think, they dropped the CIS component and kept it as advanced placement.
Correct. And so we still have the teachers who have that, you know, I guess for the most part, we have the teachers who have the CIS accreditation. And so adding this back in would not, would not likely have a significant effect on the, our ability to offer those classes, because we still have most, most of the teachers who were teaching those two years ago. But what we've also seen is in those, the last presentation about the students who are taking AP, we have a significant number of students who went to PSEO who didn't take the, aren't taking the AP classes, and that dramatically affects our funding as well. So by cutting the CIS portion last year, I think we, we moved a lot of those kids over to the PSEO classes, and that does affect our funding.
So Brian, staying on this topic, are there any other courses that might have been cut in previous years that would also fall in, into this, this ballpark of thinking?
From the CIS AP, my understanding again is that they were all still offered as AP courses. So that was again, part of, I'm sorry, did I misunderstand the question?
So last year, we cut French III as an example. Does that, you know, in terms of allowing principals to manage the FTE that they're given, is that a different conversation if we're considering French III versus CIS?
To me, no. As a, as a former high school principal, I would treat all of those things similar in that if you give them a certain allocation of FTE and you say you must stay within that, they're going to make those decisions based on how many students sign up for each of those courses. And so if we have a course where only, let's say, 10 students sign up, and the typical baseline is 20, I believe, that, that Dave would use, those students are determining whether or not those courses run simply based on those enrollments. And again, if those, let's just call it 20, if there were 20 students who signed up, let's say for French III, as you said, and we no longer offer that as an option, they sign up for something else, and oftentimes those FTE follow with them. So again, the, the FTE that we're allotting to sites is the FTE, and they're going to have to stay within those parameters. That's why cutting, in that case, a specific course doesn't really save, because they're just not offering it. They are going to offer something else in those practices. So it really is a part of the core sizes of the FTE allotments and all wrapped into that holistic conversation, and then certainly working with our principals to make sure that we're setting appropriate baseline class size averages, whatever that number happens to be based on the FTE allotments. As a former high school principal, when things had to get tighter, those numbers had to shift. And so when I used to maybe be able to offer a section of 15, now I had to move it to 16 or move it to 17, because you see what the impact is of, I don't want to have a class size of 50 so that I can run this class of, of 10, for example.
Okay. Board members, any other questions? So in terms of, let's see, so Dr. Battle, you were very clear on the, the items that you and your team are no longer recommending. Board members, do we have thoughts on those?
I agree with the taking orchestra at the, those two levels off, off the table, or putting a little no's next to them, is the case maybe. Then what was the not eliminating ninth-grade athletic teams? That was the other recommendation, right? And reducing the EA is also coming off the table. Is that correct? So all those, these 48 through 55, is that correct?
EA, Director Shet, the shots, the EA is still on the table.
Okay, so it has a little no here. Is this line item 55, right?
55, yeah.
Okay, so that, so the recommendation is that be a yes instead of a no?
How about if we start with the recommendations for, as revised by Dr. Battle and her team, so that we can look at that? Would that make sense?
Yeah, because I, yeah, no, I'm not really clear what's, what, what's happening here.
So for board consideration, so some of these items were just, were carryovers from last year, because there was such constituent involvement last year on several of these items, to bring them back and to look at them again for consideration. And so the team and I looked at those again after our last two meetings, and for reasons we've expressed in, Assistant Superintendent Gersich also explained, we are not recommending for the board's consideration the restore CIS at Burnsville High School, line 50, line 51, eliminate orchestra at middle schools, line 52, eliminate Burnsville High School orchestra, 53, eliminate ninth-grade athletic teams from athletic budget, and 54, elementary stipend. And so we, Lisa could do a strike through. Is that helpful?
Yes.
Yes. And so for consideration is line 48. Line 49, I think I need a magnifying glass. There's no way you can increase the font on this, Lisa. And 55, correct, Lisa? Those are the three? Oh, thank you. That's much better. Is that correct, Lisa?
I believe you have listed increasing fees for activities and athletics. So I believe 49 should be struck as well.
Oh, yes, excuse me. After we looked at the comparison from the board direction, we look at the comparison, we're in the middle for some things, low on others, but it is skewed by one district that has higher fees than other districts. And we can explain more about the activity fees. Lisa Ryder did some more investigation and research along with Brian Gersich.
That would be helpful.
That helpful, directors?
Yes, please.
Are you looking for me to discuss this now?
Yes, please.
Okay. So they, there was a comparison done of the neighboring and area districts with regard to the fees. And so you'll find that particularly some of the sport activities were right in the, in the middle of things, whereas there are some activities that are more maybe activity generated where we are on the low end. So to do a straight 25% across the board would mean that we would be instead up at the higher end of the range. And the difference between where the mid and that high end is, is pretty significant for a couple of the districts that we were comparing in our analysis. So as a result of that, our, our number for sure, we know, would need to possibly be shifted as calculation you see here is based on, on revenues within those areas, where if we focus just on fees only and not any other PT boosters or other, other funds coming in, then that number does go down to about 101,000. And then beyond that is the conversation of to do that kind of a 25% rate across the board would, would result in some of your activity, particularly sport fees being quite high compared to some of the others, and particularly compared to the average.
Hey, Abigail, can you hear me?
I can, yes. Go ahead, Eric.
Okay, I had to dial in separately, so I have not been able to speak until now. Yeah, I, I just, I'm not satisfied we settled on this CIS conversation. I'm sorry to bring you back, but I hadn't, couldn't get my chance to speak. So I don't feel that. So what we basically have been told is that the determination of whether classes should be eliminated or not should be left to administration dependent on participation or interest levels. That, and I want to separate that from the CIS, because I don't think French or orchestra That, and I want to separate that from the CIS because I don't think French or orchestra have anything to do with these CIS classes and whether, and from that point of consideration. Because the CIS classes, a- as was pointed out, were, were a unique situation. We cut those because they were duly located with AP at the time last year. If you, I think if demand was driving them, if we simply went to the students and if I'm wrong here, somebody can correct me, but if we simply said, hey, would you like the opportunity to get an extra credit for this? The class you're already going to take, I don't, that's kind of a no brainer. It's, it's very different than whether or not you're going to take French as an elective. So, so first of all, I'd like to separate those conversations. And second of all, so I, I think in separating that, we need to make a determination of whether we cut those appropriately last year and whether it had an impact this year on the intention of what we're doing with our college credits in, in the school. And if so, we'll leave it cut out. If not, we need to put them back in. And have that conversation in, in that light. And as far as cutting programs dependent on administration's perspective or on attendance or interest in it. The challenge there is that's fine when you cut it, then, you know, but once you cut it, it's gone. Bear that in mind. So once something like French or orchestra is cut, students aren't even going to know it exists to take it. So it wouldn't, it would never be coming back is, I think the point to be made. So I, I, I'm wholeheartedly behind taking orchestra off the, off the consideration list as, as we pointed out here. I just want to, I, I don't, I think we skipped right through the CIS thing. I don't, I don't think it should be lumped in with the same reasoning as to why we're not restoring it. We might still, as far as I'm concerned, not restore it, but I, I think we need to be discussing as to whether we made the right decision last year in this dual location of AP and CIS in, in, in a class.
Fair point. Leslie?
I agree. I don't think we necessarily made the best decision and I'm basing that off of the presentation Amina did at our last workshop that showed the, the differences in the students that had participated from the previous year to this year and those that were in the CIS classes. And so I am inclined to want to restore it myself. That's kind of where I'm leaning, but you know, I would again, want to hear from the rest of the board as well in terms of their thoughts on this because it is such an area of focus for us and what can continue to make us distinctual compared to other districts.
I didn't want to cut it last year, so I don't want to cut it this year either.
So I guess Eric's question is a fair one, you know, in terms of CIS specifically, and I think you're, you're quite right, Eric, that CIS is unique from in comparison to the other, the, the other two examples. Because it does directly impact students being in our school versus taking PSEO elsewhere. And Lisa, I understand this might not be something that you have at your fingertips, but maybe something that for us to consider, you know, what was the impact? You know, was it, was it neutral? Was, you know, because of, because of CIS, those CIS courses no longer being offered. I'm assuming it's safe, it's safe to assume that we did lose res, revenue to PSEO.
I think it's difficult to determine that that's the reason why we may have lost revenue to PSEO. You can hear me, right?
Yes.
It's really about trying to compare from one year to the other. So we took a look at the comparison for fall semester of fall 18 compared to fall 19. And there was actually more a higher cost to us for, for PSEO in, in general. But to know whether or not it had anything to do with this, I'm not sure. Because the students are all different students and, and their choices that they made are all unique. So I struggle with how to come to a conclusion that can give you the data I think that you're looking for without having like a survey of the kids or things of that nature.
That's fair. Thank you.
Yeah, I, I would agree. I don't think there's a very good correlation between the PSEO and the CIS because now having said that, there, there might be folks, kids that said, you know what, I, cause I don't remember how many, how many classes was this amounting to? Six of them or? But anyway, whatever the amount was, uh, they might've said, you know, I, this was the tipping point for me. I'm going to go to PSEO next year for my senior year. But PSEO isn't something where you would just take one or two classes and then, you know, you race up to norm and I'll do that and race back for the rest of the school day. Typically, I think these kids leave for half a day or a whole day, um, once they commit to PSEO. So yeah, the, the, the cutting or even maybe frankly, the cutting of other things or raising of fees or something might've tipped them to leaving campus to go to thinking they're going to get a better experience in PSEO, but those were kind of a one-time bump experience because the, the next couple of years of kids aren't even going to know those classes existed and, 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 you know, aren't, it's necessarily going to be in their consideration set. So I don't know if there's a direct relation there with the PSEO is my, is my point.
Chair Alt. Yes, Dr. Battle.
Thank you. Director Miller, I think what makes CIS unique is the University of Minnesota credit. Once you earn the credit, you have that high school and college credit. And some students may believe that's the benefit over the AP where it's dependent on a score. And it depends on the college what the benefits are. And so I really believe it will be helpful to talk to the students about why they made that choice. It could be various reasons. And so I think that is a unique feature and I'm not sure if Director Amina Oftodal has joined us. I can't see who else is with us.
I saw her at some point.
I'm not sure if she would like to respond or add some different perspective.
Amina?
Hi, Amina. I, I don't know. I, I agree with Lisa that it's difficult to draw the direct correlation between finances for college in the schools versus PSEO. I do know though, if we continue to have increasing numbers for classes that students are taking PSEO that match classes that we are already offering at, at the high school itself. That seems like a, a, a losing proposition for us is that we will be paying their tuition or we'll be losing that revenue for classes that we literally are offering in our school. And if we can ensure that they are earning the college credits that can go without just being a general elective credit that, that sometimes happens with the AP scores. That we're offering it to a broader range of students and we're hopefully enticing our students to choose fewer PSEO courses.
And just to clarify, Amina or Dr. Battle, in terms of taking this, the, the suggestion to take CIS off the list, are you proposing that then we would offer a single, a single class for that particular topic? And are we thinking that the students will choose either, oh, I can choose an AP? Making this up, microeconomics versus a CIS microeconomics and allow for that choice?
My recommendation would be to go back to the practice of offering it as a dual course so that it is one single course. And then if students want the option to take the AP exam that is still available to them. However, knowing that they will be able to earn that U of M credit by being a successful completion of the course is a much better offer to them. So I, I would recommend we go back to the dual offering.
And transferability is depending on where they choose to go to school.
Correct.
Right? That's really, that's really the caveat. If they choose to, to attend a U, you know, a Minnesota state school that accepts the CIS credits, they're fine. AP is a little different.
They have a much higher chance of transferring a CIS credit than they do an AP credit to a school.
Right. If they have a score of a five, that credit will probably transfer to any college or university in the nation. If they're scoring a three, then there are many colleges that will accept that credit. However, they'll only accept it as a general elective rather than a course in the field in which it was, it was taken.
Got it. Thank you.
Hey, um, you know, we're, we're kind of treading over territory we went, spent a lot of time in last year. And I mean, it just, so I just phrase this and remind everybody kind of what we talked about last year and the, you know, where we landed at. If we put these classes back, then we are sort of reversing a general policy decision, not policy, but a general decision we made using budgetary spending that we were not going to have dual AP CIS environments at Burnsville. You know, that potentially means that down the road, we might add more and have additional costs or shifts of funding from one place to another to continue the idea. I'm not necessarily arguing one thing or other. I just want to be clear of what we're talking about. We're not just talking about one class, be it, you know, economics or whatever the example is. We're talking about a, a sort of philosophical discussion we had last year and a decision we made as a group that in the budget constraints that we operate now in, we could no longer offer the, I'm air quoting here, luxury of AP and CIS simultaneously for a class. So again, let's talk freely about it. I just want to be clear. That's, that's really what is at hand here. It's not an individual course or offering or, you know, particular. It's whether or not this is the way we want to offer additional college credits.
Fair point.
I would offer that with the new information we received this year. I believe that's why we are revisiting this discussion again. Director Oftodal can give us the exact figures, but we had almost 300 less students take those advanced courses. And so I think when we look at our strategic directions to make sure that our students are college and career ready, we have to continually assess our offerings and programs. And so that was especially concerning that we had a dip in students accessing the courses. And so I would offer that each year. I think when we look at the data of our students and your goals and the strategic plan, we may have to revisit based on new information.
Well, and I think there are also other, other points going back to last year. I think Eric, you made the point that, you know, what is our purpose? Is our purpose to be a high school that prepares our students for post-secondary? Kind of giving a direct nod to our pathways program? Or are we actually becoming a college ourself? And I'm not, I'm just going to throw this out there. I'm not necessarily arguing one way or the other, but is it too soon to tell? I mean, it was a huge conversation last year. And we know that the decision, you know, at, at a board level, we made the, the decision in terms of what we felt was, was the best course offering for our students based on the rigor that's available, what we know about AP courses. And I just, I just wonder if, if we haven't allowed ourselves adequate time to, you know, have our staff and our students embracing AP and seeing what that might be.
One of the things I would offer when we were taking a look at AP is to really, as we look at the, you know, the three to five year trend, we do not see significant numbers of students earning those credits with their scores. It tends to be very straightforward to be, you know, 30% getting the fours and fives and 60% picking up the, the, about 30% of those kids will pick up the three score. So, and the fact that we had, you know, over 200 students who chose not to take any college prep course, even P, I mean, any of those means that we had a big gap in numbers of students who simply chose not to participate in free college credits while, you know, while enrolled at high school. And so I think there's an opportunity gap there. And, and I think the fact that when you say to them, there's, there's, you know, almost half of you will not earn the credit by completing this course. And that's been our trend data going forward.
Right. But I, last year we also discussed that it's not necessarily the credit itself. I mean, that is certainly a component. I think having our students being exposed to that level of rigor, which going back to that, I, I, and correct me if I'm wrong, the rigor in AP is unique compared to college and the schools. The difference is there's a test at the end of the year versus with CIS, you take the course and you get the credit. So it's kind of a philosophical conversation. I mean, those that, that want to get the, the college credit, you know, for those people that, that makes a difference. For others, if there's, you know, I want to test this out to, because I want to go on to college and I want to see if I'm ready for that level of rigor. AP is good for that. And, and in the same way that we don't know why students, more students took PSEO this year. And Dr. Battle, I think you're, you're absolutely right in, in checking in with them. We don't necessarily know why they haven't taken AP. Why the drop?
I struggle with the, there, there might be some connection between the CI, the change in the CIS environment and that drop in numbers, but I don't know that they are, that it's the total, the total reasoning. I mean, there's a many reasons that could have gone into that. First of all, it could be a one-time drop. We could see a return next year, but it could be that there was a better accessibility to the PSEO for some reason, you know, this year that we didn't, we're not aware of externalities there. It could be that success of our pathways program is actually leaching off of the, some students that might've traditionally taken college credits. I, I don't, there's a lot of thing, it could be that we're not promoting it as well or efficiently in the, in the high schools we used to. I, I don't know that necessarily $66,000 worth of CIS classes changed that number that dramatically like that. I have, I struggle thinking those two are one-to-one rela- relativity.
I think one of the, that, one of the conclusions that you have to, that the numbers show us is that the number of students who are taking the college and the schools classes, and there's no causality there, I agree, but the number of students that took those combined AP college in the school classes in the previous year is fairly close to the number of kids who chose to not engage in any this year.
May I speak, Abigail?
Yeah, go right ahead, Scott. Yeah, sorry.
I've just, at this point, I guess I feel like we in some ways owe it to our students to try and get some of the answers to these questions. Is there a causality? Is there a reason why so many fewer students are taking these classes? And if it is because of CIS, then we need to look at that. Now, we're in a situation where college costs $10, $20, $30,000 a year and many of our students can't afford four years of college at what college costs. So anything we can do to help them be future-ready? So that maybe they can get all or part of even the whole year of college credit while they are a student at Burnsville High School. That gives them a leg up when they do go off to college afterwards. So I feel like we need to at least, if we can't make a decision tonight, I feel like we at least need to get more information to try and figure out, is this something that the support is there, the interest is there, and it's worth the investment for the district in our students?
Dr. Battle, do you, is that something that is manageable?
Yes, Chair Alt. I believe the directors have prompted some additional thoughts. The questions are questions we do need to explore a bit more. And we can come back with some more information and possibly table this discussion for now and get back some responses to the issues, the ideals and questions you have raised.
That would be wonderful. So maybe we just shoot to have that, you know, aim to have that information for the night. All right.
Yes, forgot to unmute. Yes, forgot to unmute.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
So then the previous kind, the previous topic we were on, Lisa had just provided um, additional perspective on fees. Were there any comments on that?
Based on what she shared, I have no problem leaving that as is and not increasing fees.
Agreed.
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 So I think since the purpose, I'm I'm glad that we were able to to get that. I think that's helpful. Just looking at the other items. Sorry, it's small.
I have a question about the district-wide administrator.
Yes.
I guess my question is, Doc, can you explain more about that?
Yes, that was the uh, another review of every item, um, every expenditure, every staff member that's coded to um general fund and just really looking at streamlining, because if you look at the school closure, there's a significant number of staff that will be reduced based on the school closures. And so really to look at every other item to see where else we could be um, streamlining, where we could possibly uh, pick up the work in other areas. So that was the addition. Just going back again, reviewing every uh, staff member, every item coded to general fund.
Okay, and it certainly, I and I appreciate the review and it's certainly necessary. What other staff would take over the grant work that's being done by this position?
So Assistant Superintendent Gersich has been working on uh, what that would look like, and so I'll turn it over to him for details.
Yeah, so uh, appreciate the opportunity here. Uh, again, Madam Chair Superintendent Battle and Board of Directors, since I don't think I actually gave my proper introduction the last time I had a chance to speak. That is something that is within uh, the area of my direct reports, and I'm not exactly sure where we're at with the identifiability certainly of the position here and what that would look like. But from a process perspective, we have an entire organizational chart that includes a specific listing of everything that people are responsible for. The work and all of the things that we're doing for our students would need to continue. And so I have already mentioned to Director Oftedal and Director White, as well as everyone within the team, that we would have to look at those responsibilities and reallocate that throughout the organizational chart. And so again, I'm not sure, I'll I'll defer to Superintendent Battle as far as how specific we want to get with the naming of this position and identifiability at this time. I'm certain that that's something that you're going to want to know in the future. I just want to know about timing. Uh, but from a process perspective, it's sitting down with the entire team and taking a look at everyone's strengths and how we would have to reallocate all of those responsibilities, because we are not within that reducing programs or opportunities for students. It's absorbing more within the system um, so that we can continue to offer those things, albeit with less staffing, much like what we're doing across our entire system.
And also related to that is the reorganization of the administration at Burnsville High School. Principal, uh, so looking at those also in supportive way.
Correct.
And the addition of the posa um, to the CISA department.
Because there's a lot of, um, there's a lot of things in here in this position that are pretty critical to pretty critical to uh, the programming that we do offer. So to say that it's, you know, it's not strictly, it's it is, it does affect the student um, experience, the student work that we do, because the the collaboration with organizations and things like that, I mean, that's what's brought brought about um, a lot of our opportunities for organizations, for internships, externships, um, things like that. And so the conservative courses, I'm assuming that everybody is currently working at full capacity in their current positions. And so to eliminate this position, that certainly raises a concern for me that we would be adding more onto onto already already capacity staff in in positions. And even then, we by necessity need to drop some of this, because it's certainly I mean, this is, and and just the grants piece itself is we're we're literally having a budget discussion about things that we have to cut. And we're looking, this is a recommendation to eliminate a position that writes grants, um, that brings in money for the district. So I'm struggling a little bit with understanding how how this is how this advances the work um, that we're doing or even maintains the work that we're doing with our, for our students and how it would, it seems like it would cut um, income and grant money that's coming into the uh, district as well.
Dr. Battle, did you want to speak to that?
Yes, so as Assistant Superintendent Gersich explained, we do expect the work to continue. It will look at some restructuring. Lisa Ryder and I also have had a discussion about grant writing. I do believe previously there was a grant writer, but that was a reduction in a previous budget cycle. So yes, we are looking at continuing that. We know how crucial it is. So I thank you for your concern. I think all of these reductions are concerning for the very reasons that you said. Staff is working hard every day and they're really um, in support of the programs and support for our students.
But and I think I'd like to dovetail on Darcy's comments. It's it's a tough position, and I know that there are no no good choices right now, right? It's a tough position to have just tabled a conversation on college in the schools and see that our pathways position, I I I think it it is concerning. Um, it's it's, I I just wonder what kind of message it's sending in terms of, you know, staff advocating for college in the schools and 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 then, you know, the pathways I I and and connection with our community. That's an important piece of what we do. So, yeah. It's gonna, that work still needs to be done if if this is truly where you you and your team have decided to land. So looking quickly at the other items, I didn't hear any pushback yet on orchestra, ninth grade athletics. And the patrol patrol stipends falling off the list.
I was not happy about a limit potential of the, when we, I was happy last year when we decided not to eliminate them. I'm equally happy this year that they are not on the list.
Okay, um, so let's look at, um, I think our our real purpose today, as I had said, we need to have the tough conversation about class sizes and whether we're able to reach consensus on that today, or, you know, again, you know, come back. We we still need to continue that that conversation. And I know that there still is transportation and EAs, but we just have to think about the timing on this. And and I I wanted to bring that to the board to talk about.
Abigail, if I could. Can we first clarify that we are in agreement as a body that we're looking at a minimum of a one unit increase in the classroom size? Um, and 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 then move forward from there, or do we first need to have the discussion of a any or at all? I'm throwing that out there as a group-wide question.
Well, that was kind of where we were, we needed to start. I don't think we can, based on the conversation last time, I didn't feel comfortable making the statement that we are all in agreement on uh, one increase of one. So open it up.
Oh, well, people are going off mute since I'm already up here. I'll I'll jump in. I I am comfortable with that, um, and a a at least one.
I actually again, it's it's, there are no good choices. And there are so many things that are unknown. I, you know, on the one hand, I think about, you know, our reality, our new reality with COVID and not knowing how that's going to affect our budget right now. We're still working that through. On the other hand, I'm not over, I'm not overly pessimistic about where we might land next year with enrollment. And you know, we're looking at the dollars, you know, the financial money that that is estimated for savings if we if we increase class sizes. Behind the scenes, we've invested a lot of money in our teachers with professional development, whether it's internal or external. External obviously comes with its own price tag. And I know that, you know, we've worked to, uh, we had to train staff to implement Avid in all of our middle schools. We have the trainings for the required training for CIS. And I just want to put it out there. Again, I I still haven't quite I I am still grappling with with what is best. You know, the conservative side of me is saying, yes, I agree, increasing class sizes probably is the conservative, the conservatively, the the best fiscal decision. At the same time, we, this is a year of transition and we don't know where we're going to land. And I worry about these, you know, very talented, very caring, well-trained. I mean, they've, you know, they've gone through a lot of trainings, trainings with us. I worry about losing staff with that experience level only next year to find out that we have to fill those positions with a whole new set of people that 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 don't know our kids, that don't, that aren't on board with what we're trying to do here. So that's kind of where I am.
I'm going to jump in with the, uh, I'm I'm not willing to go to two. Um, I'm leaning towards a supportive, um, a 1.5 in this area.
Abigail?
Yes, DeeDee.
Yes. I've had to implement um, class size changes in my career. And I, it's, the one nice thing about class size is it it goes across for want of a better term, the ocean. I mean, in other words, it goes across the whole plane of of things. And it it gives us, um, I think it gives us an a savings that's, uh, that's okay. We've squeaked and we've we've done things in our budget to to save. But this is something that that can be done. And I think you can trust your site administrators to use it wisely. I know when I was serving, I I know I made some folks angry because I you know, I I was very conservative in the spring, and then I waited till I knew what my numbers were in the, in August, um, before I finalized my my staffing. But when I look at our master agreements, I I I don't think you have to worry as much about losing staff. I I I think we have some very nice master agreements, so and we have also, I think, a teaching staff that's very committed to this community. So I I think I think that 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 raising the class size is okay. Now, I missed the two of your meetings in March, so I'm sort of catching up this this evening on what you talked through and in March, but I we we've tinkered with that class size ratio through the years, so I'm in support of it. At least one, I I and even up to 1.5. So that's my, my spin on it.
Anyone else?
I would be comfortable at the very most going up only by one. If we determine that's a, um, the best course for us to to take. And then I know that we're talking about class size, but I still want to go back to the that administrator position. I am concerned because one of the, one of the tasks for the district is to continue to look for additional revenue. And if you're cutting the person who has the skill set to do that more full-time and focused, um, and you want to trickle it on to other people where that's not necessarily their skill set or their ability, and they have their their primary position, I think this is what Darcy was referring to too. It's going to get you're going to lose um, that that rev, you know, the opportunity to be seeking out additional revenue. And so I'm actually kind of concerned about the elimination of that position in terms of the focus of um, our pathways program and the emphasis on that external relations with with the businesses. And so um, I just wanted to throw that out there too, while I had, while I was unmuted.
That's great. Thank you. Scott?
As far as class size, I am feeling a little anxious about increasing class sizes. I think, like you said, we've, we're going through a lot of transition already this year before the whole COVID-19 thing started. We were already going to be going through a lot of transition. I know one of the concerns that a lot of people had, we were having the discussions around school closings, was around class sizes. So I don't know that it sends a great message if we say we're going to increase class sizes by two immediately after also closing three schools. So that's, that's one of my concerns. I I do think, having seen Stacy's presentation, I think it was our last meeting or two meetings recently, about the impact of class sizes and what it actually would look like, I would feel more comfortable with an increase, with supporting an increase of one. I would feel much more nervous about supporting an increase of two in class sizes based on what it was shared with us a couple of weeks ago.
Thank you. Jen?
Yep, go ahead. I was going to say, uh, I also, um, I agree with everything you said, Abigail, about um, the teachers and how much work they've put in and all the additional training. I feel though, the we're so limited on our choices at this point. I would be comfortable with a one. Um, I'd be comfortable if that's what we landed on. Um, I'd be comfortable if that's what we landed on. Um, I definitely would say no to a two. I think we should try to avoid that as much as possible. Um, I guess with some wiggle room to the 1.5, just because if we're trying to save a position here. Or save a program here, we're gonna have to be flexible with going between one and one and a half, so we're not. Um, digging ourselves into a deep hole. And like you said, we have no idea what the budgetary effects are gonna be with the COVID. And with what we've been doing, um, and I'd still rather err on the side of caution, so we're not doing this again next year because we didn't plan for. Much of a difference it made. If that makes sense.
Yeah, thank you. So um, having heard everybody, I think, has everybody had a chance? I think we did. Um, one question that I have. I think you all are right, and I and I, you know, I think I think. Even recognizing that this is not a great choice, you know, I I have to say, you know. No more than one. I do have a concern and is Stacy's here, right? Stacy Solvin?
Um. Yes.
I um. There were there were some concerning realities that might be introduced if we go to 1.5. Increase as opposed to a one. Can you revisit that for us, Stacy? In our last workshop, you had talked about some of the challenges that that happened when when we increased class size by by a half.
Well, the the biggest challenge, even though we may go from a from a one to a one and a half, or actually from a one and a half to two. The elementary is is. I'm not going to see that actual increase between one and a half and two. Just because of the grades, the in the way that it's distributed amongst the buildings. So even going up to a two at the elementary level, you're going to, um, it's not going to be efficient. I'm not really going to gain much. At the elementary level to to look like a true increase between one and a half and two. If that's what you're referring to, that's the that's what I recall as far as my comment on the last time.
Well, and kind of one one teacher that you'd have, you know, one teacher kind of bouncing between.
Yes, once once we start it, once we start into the larger class sizes at the elementary as well. Um, you know, we're going to be utilizing more point five positions per grade level. You you may end up having to split. We do this all the time at the secondary. We do have teachers who travel between buildings for different specialist areas to round out FTEs. It it just becomes more awkward for that as well.
Okay. Well, I my speaking for myself, I'd be I'd be fine with no more than one, an increase of one.
Carol.
Yes, Dr. Battle.
So uh, I would concur. I would recommend an increase of one. Um, it, as you've said, I think a few times tonight, uh, there are no good choices and losing the talent, the perspectives and the commitment. Of uh teachers who have been committed to our equity goals, um, committed to our families um and their children. I do believe um. It does come down to the numbers and submitting a a balanced budget. Um, and so I hope that constituents, our constituents will rally around about why we were in this position. Um, it's very hard in these times of uncertainty and change to talk about money. When we all know um there are larger concerns that we have. But at some point, um, when this new normal, when we revert back to the the normal, we do have to look at our funding system. About why we're here, that there's a significant gap um in our inflationary costs. And so um with that, we will uh put the increase by one as part of the recommendation.
Yeah, and thank you for bringing that up to Dr. Battle that. Now more than ever, we, you know, all the energy that our parents and our families have have invested in sharing their opinions with us with us. As a school board, we need people to communicate with our legislators because this is, you know, it's it's. A never ending cycle, and at some point, education needs to be prioritized by our our legislators and our elected officials. Um, all right.
So I'm not sure if you want to see the impact of uh the new recommendations, and I could remove the. Uh, 1.0. From the district wide administration, so you can see the impact, if that's okay with everyone. Okay. Over to Executive Director Ryder.
I believe now you should be seeing my Excel file with the list of adjustments, and as I heard you mention. Dr. Battle, we would be putting a yes under the classroom size increase of one, and we're putting an N under item number forty seven. Is that correct?
Yes.
And then as we look at the impact, then it leaves us with um. A deficit between revenues and expenditures planned for 2021 of 1.344. And an unassigned fund balance percentage calculated with these assumptions for restrictions of 6.8%.
And I guess a question on the on the um the district wide administrator, I I'm. Either missed it, or maybe it changed after I looked at it, but my understanding was that it was just a generic district wide administrator to be decided at a later date. Not specifically focusing in on a particular position. Is that a possibility?
So I'll uh speak to that and then uh ask Executive Director Solvin to weigh in. Um, it goes to the point, not all of the personnel in that unit are coded to general fund. And so one of the strategies was really trying to move as many expenditures off of general fund to other funding sources. Um, and so we can look at grants, we can actually look at other funding sources. To see um if we can still have that position. Um, so it 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 comes down, there's very few personnel that are assigned to the general fund within that group. Um, I'll turn it over to uh Mr. Solvin.
Yeah, we we part of the problem is we only have thirteen folks in that unit. And a number of them are funded through special ed. Another three of them are funded through community ed. Um, we have a director of operations and transportation within that, the director of finance. No, the director of finances is not in 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 that unit. Director of communication. Our director of pathways, our director of CISA. It's a very limited pool to begin with, and and you're you're going to. Funding sources back as Dr. Battle has a has already addressed is very limited as far as who's actually coming from the general fund. But once you start looking at those who are coming out of the general fund, it's also very limited as to. How those tasks could even possibly be redistributed to somebody else. I mean, you you need a facilities and transportation uh person with that. Now I'm speculating, but that's why I pretty much came to a grant position.
But well, two two things. Um, Director of CISA is only partially paid out of the general fund. The other part is paid out of the A and I budget.
That's correct.
Yep, um, and you didn't mention the Director of Technology.
Director of Technology is not a DWA position. That's a it it's um it's also covered primarily under the tech levy, if I'm not mistaken, but it is a uh. It is an unaffiliated type of a position because they have access to information that is sensitive and. With all the network access and such, it's a different classification.
Well, and I guess, you know, just since we're being frank and, you know, this is a tough conversation about money. You know, we do have the unaffiliated group. We also have this district wide administrators group. Is it possible for you to go back and sharpen that pencil and see if there might be something else that might be found, some kind of reorganization?
So, Chair. Cheryl, we can look, but then it comes down to those critical services. If you look at some of the services. So, support to our students, if you look at those other responsibilities in those other groups. They're all hard choices, you're right. So we can take another look, just as I did from the last board meeting, we took a look and I came forward with this one. Yes, the team and I can take another look.
And I fully I fully recognize that, you know, there is mandated work that has to be done, and nobody else is gonna be able to do that. But key administrators. I don't know, it just might be, thank you.
And I thank you for that last comment about the mandates. So irrespective if you're a large district like Anoka, Hennepin, or uh districts of our size, we still have the same financial mandates. From the Minnesota Department of Education, and so that's one of the uh the critical viewpoints we look at at each position. Uh, we map it against the mandates, and as uh Mr. Sovi said, there's some things that. You can't just give to another person, or we must continue to have the position to support it. So thank you for that.
Yeah, right, but doesn't that always also go back to the fact that we can't just redistribute this position? Responsibilities to to somebody else because everybody else is already doing something else, especially the mandated positions.
Well, we do have expertise in some grants, and we do have other administrators that have some experience. I think that's a part of what uh. Mr. Gersich was talking about. We have to look at everyone's skill set, and so we do believe we have the skill set within. Irrespective, it's still a tough decision. Yes, very valuable. Um, the expertise and talent of any of the staff members we will be losing. It can be unique, but we do believe we have the skill set within, but we'll take another look. Again.
Okay, thank you. Um, and that leaves, how are we doing on time? We're still doing. Are folks still good with with continuing through this? Yep.
Yeah, that's why we're here.
All right, uh, transportation, let's look at line forty eight. Increasing the walk distance. What do folks think about that?
I am reluctant at this moment. I could be convinced, but I'm reluctant. Um, I think we already this year made a pretty significant change in our transportation with. Having our high school students walking to the middle schools. So I I think, yeah, so I'm I'm reluctant, but willing to have a conversation.
Our district has many. Many places where students can't cross or walk, so they have to be transported and I. I'm thinking uh with the all the new transportation to the new buildings that. That I don't know if that's even been worked out, but um I I wouldn't favor adding. Uh, an increasing the walk distance at this time.
Lisa, you shared some information with us today about um impacts of of this change. Can you speak top line to that in terms of, um, and I know I had I had had a question about this, and DeeDee, you touched on it, that there are certain thoroughfares that. Students cannot craft cross and we we bus. So for example, County Forty Two, McAndrews, Thirteen Cliff. Um, Nicollet is protected for elementary students only. Um, and with the school change, you know, with the closure of the schools. I'm actually, it actually, I, me personally, I'm feeling a little more comfortable with this one because of the school change and and. The if you look at the number of of people, um, and Lisa, I'm sorry, I'll let I'll let you speak to it, but the impact. Yes, there is an impact on our students, but um. As a percentage of all students, it's very small.
Right, so I emailed to all of you the transportation facts that we gained today. As this was studied further by our routers in the last few, um, in the last week. So what we learned is that for if we talk about the high school for a moment. Our current walk boundary for the high school really only includes one particular apartment complex that is along Highway Thirteen in Nicollet. So expanding it by another point five of a mile would include uh seventeen more students. That are located um nearby that are not impacted by a hazard boundary. Uh, for our middle schools, you know, when we add in those numbers in total for high school and all. Uh, middle school students, we'd be looking at the impact to two hundred and six students in total. By increase of the point five walk distance for secondary. It is not suggested that we increase the walk zone for elementary. The impact of this particular item would mean that we would have. Two less buses, and that's where you see that uh dollar amount indicated. It would um. It would indicate that we would anticipate that there's. Uh, a gain from our current Metcalf Walk Boundary. Which is seventy six students, meaning that they need to be bused now. And so we're taking that into consideration. That offsets the the otherwise two and a half. Buses or that it would be for the two hundred and six students, if that makes sense. So um there is further detail exactly of the exact numbers for high school and middle school for each of the different. Areas that we're talking about for Nicollet Middle School Stop or Eagle Ridge Middle School Stop. Um, that's included in that, and I can go further, but um at this point, I'll stop and see if there's further questions.
Thank you. Thank you, Lisa. Questions? Scott.
Yeah, I was looking at what you sent out earlier today, Lisa, and. Let me pull up, I can have everything in front of me. So. This year's using Nicollet as an example. There's a hundred and seventy seven high school students that are walking to Nicollet and taking the bus every day. Is that what that nineteen twenty numbers saying?
That's correct.
Okay, and then towards the top, the Nicollet extra point five walk boundary. So that that is another hundred and sixty students. Are we saying that next year there could be three hundred students getting on a bus to go to the high school every day?
Uh, very well.
Over three hundred students?
See, sixty six plus the one seventy seven, yes.
That's almost doubling the number of buses that we would have in Nicollet every day, and. The traffic flow could be a challenge. It's been better this year, if I think, than people feared it could be. But that's three hundred kids walking to Nicollet every day and getting on the bus to the high school is gonna. Be a lot more buses and Nicollet at the time when a lot of middle school students are.
I don't.
Getting dropped off very soon.
I don't know that it'd be more buses. It's just that more of the buses that are there will be utilized for transporting and taking kids over to the high school from there. So currently, some of the buses will just move on. And and only some of the buses are actually being filled with students to take them to the high school. Does that make sense?
Yeah. I'm still concerned about it, though. It's still a lot of.
Understood.
People converging at the same time to get on the buses. Whether they're walking or being driven by their parents or however they're getting to the middle school. Looks like it's. Looks like it's less of an issue at Eagle Ridge than in Nicollet, in terms of forty additional students next year instead of a hundred and fifty additional students. It's changed thoroughly. My concern is around the impact on traffic and volume of people going in and out of Nicollet at the same time every morning.
Well, and I think too, um, there's a management question there, Scott. I, I don't disagree that, you know, is that parking lot at Nicollet managed as well as it possibly could be to make sure that we're keeping all of our students safe?
Right.
And if, and if, 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 if we, regardless, I would say whether we're looking at the current situation for next year or expanding walking distances, I would expect that we're gonna look at that, at that process and the transportation in and out of, out of our middle schools to get the, the students to the high school and, and make sure that we are managing it well. Anyone else? Okay. So... Question? Go ahead.
So, we, so we see, see where we are in terms of the number? Is it still at one-point-three, Lisa?
Oh. There you are. We're still one-point-three-four-four.
And at six-point-eight-zero for unassigned fund balance?
Correct.
Okay.
Which is actually a slight improvement over our fund balance this year, it looks like. Am I reading that correctly?
Uh, it is a slight improvement over our revised budget, mostly not because of your deficit of revenues versus expenditures for the given year's budget, but more around the intentional plan to spend those restricted funds before spending unassigned funds.
Thanks.
So, Lisa, could you flip, please flip back to the, uh, yeah, thank you. Brings us, that brings us to the educational assistance, the media EAs. Any comments or thoughts on that?
I have one, one question not about the EAs, but what is our, our goal in terms of the percent for the unassigned fund balance? Like, what are we wanting to do or be?
That's a good question. So, policy is eight percent. And we see where we've been for the, you know, adopted and, and revised. Are we interested in staying in the same ballpark? Are we interested in trying to get close to eight percent?
I don't think it's realistic to expect we will be able to get a, get to eight percent this year, given again, all the changes we were already planning on this year, on top of what everything that's going on over right now. Lisa, when it comes to year to spend some of the rainy day fund, this is the year, it is pouring out.
Lisa, this is Eric. Would you, for the sake of argument, um, just zero out the, the one-point-three, uh, cell? Just go right into there and zero, put a zero in there.
Uh, I, I think that there's other formulas built on that. Can you tell me more about what you're trying to accomplish?
Well, I, I, I just want to point out that if we actually got to, uh, got to a neutral, um, budget, what we would accomplish in getting for the, um, the, the fund balance.
Okay, I follow what you're saying. Hold on. That's what you meant.
We could gain a percent by, um, by, um, getting, finding the one-point-three in additional cost cuts. Just a, just an example, uh, as we had this conversation, I, I'll, I'll just take a moment while I'm off, you know, to say that where we landed with, uh, you can put that back, Lisa, it's, I, does, uh, where we are now, um, with the selections we've made and, and landing at the fund balance six-point-eight is, um, would, is exactly where I would like to be. I'm perfectly fine with everything we're at now. Uh, I have stated this a number of times, I think, to echo kind of what Scott has said, and we have a unique situation occurring. Um, I, I think, um, I'm actually happy we're not drawing down the fund balance, to be perfectly honest. Um, that, that's a, that's extremely positive news to me. Um, so, holding it neutral, possibly even a slight increase, depending on where we come with the revised budget next year, uh, is perfect for me, um, given the, the amount of unknowns we really don't have a gra- handle, uh, grip, grip on right now, those including, of course, our current environment. Um, and wish to which, uh, by the way, sub sidebar, Lisa, I would be interested if not tonight, uh, some point, if you have any input, uh, or perspective, if you start thinking all the longer term on what, uh, some of the current, uh, stuff is going on, and my having back to these numbers on this, um, uh, spreadsheet, between, you know, between not being in school, um, but I know there's shift in there and transportation costs and then there's this whole possibility of money coming from the federal government, et cetera, et cetera, so. But anyway, back to what I was saying, um, uh, I'm, I'm, I'm almost ecstatic that we're landing at a six-point-eight, given all the, uh, unknowns that we have coming up. The, I, I still argue that the closure of the, uh, three schools are gonna have a, uh, larger, uh, ultimate impact than we are able to, you know, quantify right now. So, that's where I stand on it.
Thank you. Anyone else? Jen? Go ahead, Jen.
Um, yeah, I would, uh, definitely echo what Eric was saying. I, um, I'm very comfortable with the list as it is now. Um, I would, I would not want to, um, cut any of the elementary EAs for the media center, um, especially with trying to implement the pathways, um, into the elementaries and, uh, potentially, you know, making much better use of, you know, the maker space and things like that. I feel like they're gonna be, uh, more valuable this next year than, um, we realize. Um, I'm comfortable with, like I said, the whole list, I'm comfortable where it is right now and I define being done.
I see head nodding, heads nodding, yeah.
I still want to have more conversation around CIS, but otherwise, I agree with Jen and Eric.
Lisa, can you just flip back to that sheet one last time, please? Just, just to wrap up, because I think that's where we are. We're at a no for forty-seven through fifty-five. And we're at a yes for fifty-six. Does that sound about right, folks?
Um, I think. Yeah, what could, what could a yes on fifty look like? I, I'm, I'm agreeing with, with Scott on this. I, I'm, I'm sold on everything else. I, I just, um, still wanna touch back on the CIS.
It changes it from six-point-eight-two to six-point-eight-eight. I was just doing that.
Actually, it brings it down a little bit as far as the spend down, right? Because we're spending sixty-six. So, I'm getting a six-point-seven-four. Did I have something wrong?
Nope, I have a different, no, you're right.
Okay.
Different iteration.
Is this what you wanted to see? Back to the list?
Yes, please. So, to recap, um, do we want to have Lisa and her staff look at the district-wide administrator from a, a top-line perspective? Or are we fine with just having that be no?
I'd be fine with it being a no for now.
I still think we need to look at what you were brought up earlier, Cheryl, as far as taking another look and seeing, are there other opportunities for efficiencies that maybe he used to try to sharpen the pencil. Look, now take another look and, and see if there's still, if, if this isn't the right move, are there still other opportunities?
So, we'll have that come back.
Yeah.
We'll have that come back. And I think everything else we're pretty, we're pretty good with, right?
I think so.
All right. Great discussion. Thank you. And Dr. Battle, do you have any questions before we, we switch topics?
No, thank you for the feedback. Uh, Lisa Ryder, do you have questions about next steps?
Uh, no, I, no, I do not.
Okay.
Great. Thank you very much, Lisa. Thank you, Dr. Battle. Um, with that, we will, uh, switch over to Amina Oftedal and we will talk about the AA degree.
And we have Amina with us who will present.
Thank you, Cheryl, to members of the board, Superintendent Battle. Um, uh, today I just wanted to share some additional information, uh, about the associate's degree. Just to start my video. There we go. Um, when looking at the AA degree tonight, I just want to, uh, just, uh, share some additional pieces of information and, uh, take another look at the credit attainment, uh, information that you, uh, requested since my last presentation. So, when we go back and think about the Associate of Arts degree, uh, to be thinking about it as not only a support to pathways classes, um, but also to be thinking about it as a way for students to continue to experience that, um, that rigor and that, uh, college experience while they are still in, uh, high school with the supports. And that can be a nice transition for lots of, lots of students. Um, and that students who take the path, take the, um, courses that are concurrent enrollment are not excluded from participating in another pathway. So, when we think about the, uh, associate's degree and what could be some of the benefits, one of them is to provide that, uh, opportunity for, uh, college attain, college credit attainment for our students in the academic middle. The, um, articulated, uh, associates degree, associates of arts degree really does match with our Avid program and using the Avid program as a place, uh, for students to, uh, really become prepared to do that first year of college or that first semester of college while they are, um, um, in high school. And I think, uh, making that available not just to our high potential and high achieving students, but also for our students who have really been supported in the academic middle. Um, we know that, uh, uh, the two-year community college is one of the number-one choices um, uh, who are applying for college for our students. And so, this gives them that opportunity to, uh, make inroads into that or complete that degree before they, before they graduate from high school. Um, when we think about the associate's degree versus PSEO, um, the associate's degree is a degree that, uh, is earned through a series of courses, whereas PSEO is simply, uh, students choosing various courses that appeal to them. Um, so, there's no structure to the PSEO, uh, unless the student chooses to put that on themselves. But the associate's degree really does provide those students, especially those who might be first-time college students in their family, the, you know, that pathway to, uh, to college. Um, it is cost-neutral for, for students. There is no college debt for the students after they, uh, for their first two years of college. And so, that really can, uh, be an equity piece where we can make that available to students and families who are looking for, um, additional, um, ways to manage that, that cost, which we know is just, uh, very difficult for, for most folks. Um, developing the skills is that they really do, um, as articulated through the Avid program as well, get that experience on self-efficacy. They really do have to work on those, the skills, study skills and, um, all of those particular pieces. Uh, distance learning is listed in here. I think all of our students will have some great experience with distance learning this year. Um, but it will also be, uh, one of the components in the Associate of Arts degree. Uh, I just wanted to bring this particular slide back just to show how much progress we have already in place for that associate's degree and knowing that, uh, we do have a few more pieces that we would want to put in place to, and some of them will be very simple solutions. The Associate of Arts degree really does take a look at cohort of students. And so, we wouldn't be offering this for eleventh and twelfth graders next year. It really is starts, uh, as, uh, as almost a, a parallel pathway for students when they enter into ninth grade. And so, there's a lot of foundational work that we can do with those students in ninth and tenth grade, especially when we pair that with Avid. Um, uh, there was a request to kind of take a look at, uh, the, um, comparison of how our college credit um, attainment courses are compared to last year in, uh, in terms of our students of color. And so, I wanted to just do this comparison. In green, you see the numbers for this year. Um, the nineteen-twenty are the total number of students who are enrolled, um, in each of the programs with their, with the totals. Um, the middle column shows the percentage of how many of those students are students of color and how many of those students are, are white students, uh, in comparison with the previous year, uh, which is in blue. And, um, you can see overall, there, there was a significant change, but, um, you can also see that, uh, it seems to have impacted our students of color, uh, more significantly than, um, our white students. So, for whatever reasons, when we, uh, know that we aren't able to actually, uh, know what every single reason is for the choices that students have made, but it does, uh, um, show that there continues to be a significant decrease in the numbers of our students of color who are accessing our courses, um, that have college credit versus our white students, uh, um, who are, who, who tend to, um, continue to take advantage of those benefits. Um, we also take a look at our AP score breakdown, um, and I know this is something that you looked at last year. So, I just wanted to replicate that, that same data for this year, oh, uh, for twenty-nineteen with the number of exams that were taken, uh, versus, uh, how many students earned each of the scores and what percentage. Uh, knowing that we have that thirty percent mark for our fourth and four, scores of four and five, whereas when we increase that, uh, two scores of three, which oftentimes can be accepted for elective credits in Min- in Minskew schools, um, uh, outside of the Minskew system, sometimes they are not accepted except as general elective credits. Um, and also, just kind of taking a look at our college and the schools and AP class size, um, this is what it looked like when we, uh, looked at the student request for these. And so, these are the ones that students, um, this year, um, and it would have happened in January of last year, how many students requested each of these courses? And what then the average class size would be for each of those, um, particular pieces? Again, that's a replication of last year's, uh, data up one year forward. So, that's the information that I have for you. I'm happy to take any questions you might have.
Thank you. Uh, board members, any questions? So, the reason that this came back again, um, Eric and, uh, Dr. Battle and I were, um, talking about this and, and really, um, wanted to open up the conversation for us to consider um, and ask questions around any, uh, any mess, well, opportunities. Obviously, this is a great opportunity. And also, um, considering, uh, again, that messaging around the courses that we offer. Um, is this, you know, it's something that we're exploring. Are there any downsides to this? I guess would be my first question. In terms of, um, competing, so for example, uh, Amina, I heard you say that that it's a pathway, you know, it's own unique pathway, starting in ninth grade. Knowing that there are only so many courses students can take, is that, could that be a limiting factor for some of our students who might also want to take a music or a theatrical elective? I don't know. And, and are we kind of eating our own lunch in terms of the pathways versus the AA degree?
A couple of things. As students are working through the pathways, there are a variety of elective courses that they will need to take. And so they may choose the ones that best fit their interests, such as a music course or an art course or any of the other electives that might be available, an additional literature course, those types of things. So there is a number of electives that have to be available to students. Just to kind of take a look. So you can see the electives, the liberal arts and the pre-major courses. And so those are essentially what are the electives that students are taking. It also can be looked at as running parallel to any of our pathways. And so a student might be working towards an industry certificate, but at the same time can be participating in the AA degree. So it's not precluding participation in those. The one downside that I would want to lay out on the table is the concern about attrition. If you have students who really are engaged in that and we would have higher participation in ninth and 10th grade, and then students feeling like, yeah, I don't want to continue on and fulfill this particular pathway. So we may look at some attrition over the course of the years. And, and we just need to be.
That would be imagined to be normal for any, for almost any program.
It is. It's, we see that, we see about a 10 to 15% attrition in our AP classes as well. So any program has that level of, has some level of attrition.
Right. I brought this up on the, at the last meeting, I think. And I'm going to bring it up again now since we spent a fair amount of time tonight talking about CIS. But this needed credits column of 20, based on the number of CIS concurrent courses already offered in the H. So if I remember from our last conversation, some of the CIS courses that we voted a year ago to eliminate are some of the courses that we would need for that 20 to be a lower number. Is that, is that accurate?
The, the college in the schools courses, whichever ones that we might bring back could, I mean, would be able to fulfill some of these 20. It's not necessary that we use those. They could be other courses. So it's not necessary for the, for the, it to be the college in the schools courses, but it is necessary that we do meet that number of 20.
Thank you. Good clarification.
So is this program now self-sustaining? Was the $200,000 grant then just to set up and train teachers, set up the curriculum, things like that, that like is in, as in late on the documentation here? And so is this a self, does, is there a cost to this program to the district going forward?
Yeah, we get the same cost as we would with any concurrent enrollment classes. And so these would be, those would be adding additional concurrent enrollment courses. The, when we look at the number of 29 that we currently have, those are already concurrent enrollment classes that we have in place. And this would be increasing that number by 20. And if it's college in the schools, again, that's, that has a fee associated with it, as do all of our concurrent enrollment classes. So we do know that the fee tends to be less than if students are working toward those credits through PSEO. So it, either way. And it would build from ninth grade on up. And so we would have to continue to look at how we would sustain that program financially. I think the other concern might be really thinking about how our high school teachers will be credentialed, knowing that participating in this program with our own staff requires them to have a certain level of credentialing. And I think the partners that we have are working very, very hard in looking at how we can support that with our staff.
Cheryl.
Yes.
So the sustainability is a critical issue as well as the credentialing. So our partners, Greater Twin Cities United Way, they specifically wanted us to look at that challenge of the credentialing. And so that's why it was exploratory. And of course, the cost. And as many of you know, we do get reimbursed from the state for specific courses. So I would like Amina to share some more information about the reimbursement for some of these courses.
Right. And so when we have some courses that, especially for our students that are on free and reduced lunch, there is a level of reimbursement that comes back to us for their participation. And, and that makes a, a big difference because it not only addresses some of our equity needs, but in which students who are coming from homes in which they have lower socioeconomic means are also getting that step up into college without the, the debt and the, the, the burden that comes with that. At the same time, we receive reimbursement from the state to support this program. When it comes to credentialing, there are, the state has invested a large amount of funds and set those aside to support teachers, high school teachers to earn their credentialing at a university at, in many cases, at no cost to earn those 18 credits or at a very limited cost, depending on the, the school that they choose.
So, cause that's, okay. So let me understand here. So we, last year, the CIS cuts came about because we were not receiving adequate reimbursement from the state to cover our costs for reimbursement for CIS. And so that, that's why that, that was on the budget cuts last year. And so whatever happens with that, you know, this year is, is what happens. But that, that was about a reimbursement issue. And so I'm still unclear what the, what the actual cost of this AA degree program is to. And I understand that it is, or if I, maybe if I understand this correctly, this AA program is a, an additional, an additional means for our students to earn college credits while they are attending the high school. And it is, is it viewed as a, as a more accessible way for students to gain those college, to gain those credits as opposed to the CIS classes?
I think the, the, there's a difference in the reimbursement that we get for college, just a straight up college in the schools course versus an articulated AA program. And the state has wanted very hard for us to move to us moving, for high schools to really explore this option for students to earn that, that first two years or that AA degree and have that as an articulated program. So, so I think the reimbursement fund streams are different.
Okay.
And so college in the schools courses can be part of this articulated program. But if we stick with our particular partners, we are asking our students to be concurrently enrolled and working toward that AA pathway as part of, as part of an actual articulated program, degree program, rather than just taking separate courses.
Certainly, right. Yep. So I, I understand that there's, yeah, there, there are two, there are two separate programs. It's the, I, I was asking because the, it's, I get the impression that they're re, or is the reimbursement portion of the AA degree then more secure or more likely or guaranteed in some way more than the CIS classes reimbursement were? And, and it sounds like your answer to that is the push is for, is, is that's the case? That we're more likely to actually get the reimbursement?
I think that is the case, since not all schools are offering the articulated programs. There are, there were some that are happening, but I don't think we divide that pool up quite as much with other schools. And in terms of the continuity of the funding, because it is a state legislated program, it really is up to legislators.
Okay, great. And so that kind of brings me to my, so then the other piece of it. And so is, can you, can you tell me, is this, I, I get the impression from the, from the, the conversation that this is seen as a more accessible way for, for students to earn college credits by, by enrolling this program as, as opposed to the CIS credits? Is that, is that an accurate representation of how we're viewing this program?
I, I don't think so. I think that, I think that either one of those programs can make those credits accessible to students. I think one, the AA degree allows them to actually walk away with a finished degree rather than just a separate set of credits. And so it may appeal to different students.
Okay. All right. That's, yep. And that's very helpful for that clarification. And then, so then that, the, is there, is there a number of how much this, this program will cost? Is there now that we've, now that we've gone through the two years of the grant, the $200,000 to develop the program, things like that? What is the cost of this program to us?
And, and at this time, I don't have a set budget. I know there is kind of a, a consideration of what that might cost for us, but as part of the planning, they, they have not put together what that consistent budget would look like.
Okay. So we're, this is a, okay. So this is coming to us as, as we've, we've gone through this two years of the grant to develop this program. And we, we are for sure moving forward with it, or is, does it depend on how much it costs? Like, what's the next step of this?
Cheryl. Cheryl, may I answer? So this is the second part of the grant. And it was exploratory. So we actually are on hold. And so that's part of the reason we don't have the funding framework.
Okay.
So the first part of the grant had associated activities. This was new that started July of this 2019. And also the previous grant that, 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 the first part has been completed. And then I also wanted to add the, another consideration is we had an earlier discussion about student and family interests and preferences. And so the number one choice of last year's graduating seniors who moved on to a two or four year, it was Normandale. And also, as you know, college debt is a national problem. And Minnesota particularly has a problem with student debt. And so many families look at this as one way to lower the tuition cost. So I think we also have to look at that consideration also.
And Darcy, also to help clarify, the first year of the grant was really designed to establish the pathways and to track our success in the pathways. And then the second, this, the second part, as Dr. Battle described. So Greater Twin Cities United Way helped us with the pathways and with tracking how well we're, you know, each of the pathways is representative of the school at large. And then this is part two. They've, Dr. Battle corrected me if I'm wrong, but this is really where the United Way is headed.
Yes, it's part of their strategic focus. One of the pieces for education is the, it addresses the, the cost of college. So under educational success, that's part of their policy and advocacy agenda is to advance funding and policies to increase access to concurrent enrollment programs that allow high, high school students to earn college course credit. Advance policies to reduce student financial responsibilities for post-secondary education. And so they are trying to explore how they can overcome the barriers. And that's why this was an exploratory. And so once we start again, we'll finish the other pieces. And then we would have a report of what we found along with their other partner districts. So it's part of their 2020 policy and Abbott's CAG.
Okay. It seemed, thank you. It, it seemed very straightforward to me. Just, you know, reading through the materials and then during this, you know, I guess probably as a result of the budget discussions that we've been having, then I, then I got confused about what, you know, where we were in this process and what, what exactly the costs were and where, you know, things like that. So.
Right. And at this time, we are not prepared to begin offering this next year. We have still a lot of fundamental work that has to be done. And so this is not looking at something that should be available to students next year or even the following year. That, this is really something that we, we have to lay the foundation. And I think I've said this before, is it's not as easy as just turning it on or off. We really need to have those agreements in place. We need to have good communication with families. So there's a lot of work to be done prior to making this a public offering.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate all the clarification. Like I said, it seemed very straightforward. And then as you were speaking, I got confused about where we were about this. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I just have a, maybe it's a little bit too basic of a question, given how the conversation has gone. But on the slide that you're showing, is it a coincidence that the bottom two rows add up to the first, to the required credit column? And the Minnesota transfer credit says it requires 40, but the two columns next to it add up to 49? Like I, what is that? Why, why?
Yeah. There's, there's a reason.
A good reason for it. I'm just curious what it is.
Right. So we need the 40 total credits. Right now, we have 29 credits. However, the 29 credits aren't in every single area that we need to have available to students to finish the AA degree. So we would have to look at 20 additional credits somewhere else. And then that also offers students lots of choices, because we'll have more than enough.
That's what I was curious about. Thanks.
Any other questions? I just had a couple. So Amina, you had mentioned a report back at some point.
February?
Yep. And that will kind of be a summary of your findings. And is it at that point that we might expect to see some sort of budget implications?
If we continue to do this exploratory, the budget piece is a vital piece to have in place because we do need to have that sustainability plan. We don't want to embark on something if we know we aren't going to be able to sustain it, even for the four years for a cohort of students to reach the AA degree.
Sure. Okay. So we'll look forward to that in February. And I guess a more basic question. And, and I think I know the answer, but I need to ask it anyway. Obviously, the AA degree is more than relevant for what our students need to be successful after they graduate.
Yes. I think it, it does actually three basic things. One, it provides that access and equity piece for students who won't have those opportunities. It offers it right in the same place that they are getting their high school diploma. Secondly, it really does work as an articulated piece of our first time college students or our students in the academic middle. And third, it really does increase the rigor overall in terms of an experience for students to understand the, what is necessary to be successful in college.
Great. Thank you.
Right. Thank you very much.
If nobody else has any other questions? No, I'm not seeing any. Dr. Battle, did you have any, any closing comments?
Just wanted to thank Director Oftedal for her presentation. Just one final comment. I think both of us have had experience in previous districts and it is a multi-year planning effort. Would you agree, Amina? There are many details. And so that first report will give us some crucial information. It takes a while to actually have an associative arts degree in a district.
Great. Well, I'd like to thank all of our presenters. We've really had a great conversation tonight and I feel like we've, we've made some progress in moving forward with planning and budgeting. And I know, Amina, you've come to us a number of times with, so that we can talk more about the associative arts degree. And I, I appreciate all the time that you've, that you've put into that. So with that, I believe we can adjourn. And we'll see everybody on August 9th when we have our regular board meeting.
August 9th?
August 9th.
April. Not rushed through summer just yet.